Do you need a pass?
And I'll tell you, it is that you have things to sign. Look at that, isn't that amazing?
Yeah. Great. You didn't want to just sign them. It's the fancy one. Well, I think we are live, so we'll go ahead and get started. I believe the council received both the sewer and water rate studies last week. I know it's a lot to digest, but thankfully, we have a representative from Burns &amp; McDonald here to walk us through the background and some of the proposed different rate schedules. So with that, C manager, do you have anything to add before we turn it over for the presentation?
I believe so. I really appreciate representatives being here. And Brian, if you want to kick it off or...
Yeah, you bet. So we've been working with Dave Naumann with Burns &amp; Mack for the last couple of years. We originally did the sanitary sewer or wastewater rate study that was really the result of our 2018 facility plan out the wastewater treatment plant. We wanted to, we had identified about $17 million worth of projects in that facility plan, and so we really wanted to take a hard look at the rates to see what needed to be put into place in order to fund the improvements that were identified in that facility plan. And then followed up about a year later to do the water rate study, and again, use Dave. So with that, Dave, I'll let you take it away.
Very good. It's great to be with you today. It's nice to meet in person, and it's been a pleasure working with your team. I'd like to go through a little bit of background information about your water and sewer utility from a financial perspective, a rate perspective. Then I'll talk a little bit about how we approached the study and some of the recommendations and findings coming out of that. I'd encourage questions at any time they strike you. I'm happy to stop and have a conversation. I think that actually works the best. So if I say something you want to understand more or have a question, just please let me The first thing I'd like to talk about is what we see happening with water and sewer rates nationally. And what this table gives you are some annual rate increases that are happening for water and sewer utilities from a number of different sources. The first one is a portion of CPI, actually. It's the Water and Sewer Maintenance Index. It's a portion, it's managed by the Bureau Labor Statistics. And since 2000, that averages about 4.8% per year. The National Association of Clean Water Agencies, that's a wastewater organization, so this is sewer only, but over a similar time period would show about 4.7% a year. And then the American Waterworks Association does a comprehensive rate survey every two to three years, and it shows similar results, about 5% for water, a little more for sewer. And so the walking around numbers that we use is that nationally, about 5% a year is about average. Every community is unique. We'll talk a little bit about some of the big drivers we see, the universal drivers, but every community is unique, and rate increases really fall across a wide spectrum. But that's about the average, and I think that's helpful to know. It's also helpful, and we all hear about inflation these days, and Consumer Price Index over this period is running about 2% to 2.2%. So historically, water and sewer rates have been moving up about twice the rate of general Some of the universal factors that affect us. One is that there's a general trend to lower use per account, particularly for residential accounts, and that's really from greater awareness of water conservation or low-flow appliances and fixtures and new development regulations. And so that puts a little bit of pressure on revenue when a lot of the revenue stream is driven off water consumption. Inflation on operating and capital costs is particularly true now, but generally, inflation in the cost components of your utilities rises higher than CPI as well. Capital cost inflation historically is about 3% a year. People cost, benefits, the labor it takes you to run your facilities also generally rises higher than CPI. Chemicals, those sorts of commodities all contribute to the higher-than-CPI-type average that we've seen. Regulatory requirements, particularly as they relate to water quality, affect the way that your utility operates and the infrastructure it needs. And then a really big deal is just buried infrastructure that needs to be renewed and replaced, and it's an easy thing to ignore until you have a failure. And getting caught up with that for a lot of utilities is a big element of the cost. I think another bit of information that's helpful is seeing where your water and sewer average bills sit in relation to some of your regional peers. And so this one is the water utility. Hutchinson 2022 is in green. I will say, as Brian noted, we did the sewer study a little earlier than the water study, and so there's a little bit of a timing difference. I'll talk about that. But this is current, and all the blue represents some of the regional peers around you. And what we see is that you're among the lower, clearly below average, as it relates to this set, this data set. Similarly, on the wastewater side, also low, among the lowest. This survey was done in 2020, and so it is a little bit dated. But what I would say is, we know, again, nationally, rates are going up about 5% a year. You've been implementing rate increases at about that magnitude, so I believe the competitive position probably is very similar to what we saw when we completed the sewer study. So that's it on background. Let me talk a little bit about how we approach rate studies. We look at them as a three-step process, and each of the major boxes here, first, second, and third, represent those phases. And the first step is financial planning. So that's where we look at your revenue under existing rates, and we compare that to your future operating and capital needs. And it's really a revenue sufficiency study. It helps us determine, to the extent there's a gap, how big that gap might be, and it helps inform strategies for how to close that gap. So really, the outcome of that step is really what kind of rate increase percentage are we thinking we need. Cost-to-service takes cost out of that financial plan and assigns it to your customer classes in accordance to their use. And that can give us some insight into how we might adjust your pricing a little differently than just based on what that average percentage is coming out of the financial plan. And that sets us up for rate design, which is really designing the prices to achieve the revenue that you need and also, as best we can, align with who's driving cost and be equitable that way. I like to have financial principles when we look at plans. I think having structure creates a process that we can count on and rely on. And so these are really things that, some of these are pretty common, but some of them are unique to your community, again, common, but really driven by some of the preferences of your team. One of those was, and Brian mentioned, when we got involved in the sewer utility, the hope was that the rate increases that had previously been approved would be sustainable, that we didn't find anything in that sewer study, the facility plan, that would cause us to disrupt that. And in fact, that looked reasonable, or you would have heard about it before now. And we want to mitigate rate shock as much as we can. So there's a desire to levelize those rate increases to avoid spikes in higher rate increases in some years than others. We have reserve levels that we strive to achieve. Your policy is 60 days of operation and maintenance expense plus, I think, 5% of prior year's revenues. And so that's one of the principles that we follow. We want to make sure that the financial plan is sufficient to fund that reserve. Reliance on debt makes sense, but we don't want to over-rely on it, and so we try to be cautious in that regard. And I'll talk about a concept today called debt service coverage. You use general obligation bonds primarily for funding your capital projects, and they don't have debt service coverage requirements attached to them. But what debt service coverage is, it's revenue less your operating expenses divided by that debt payment in that year. And the idea is, if you had just enough money left over after you've collected revenue and paid your O&amp;M to pay your debt service payment, that'd be a ratio of one. And in revenue bonds, usually there are covenants and requirements that coverage at least be 125 or better, and for planning purposes, we generally strive for about 1.5. So what that gives you is a little bit of buffer in your cash flow so that you can contribute cash to projects, to funding projects, and you can withstand some disruptions year to year if the plan doesn't exactly happen as we've projected it. And of course, we want to make sure we have capital projects funded as part of the plan as well. So we'll talk first about sewer. And again, we were working in sewer pre-COVID, so COVID was really kind of taking off when we were buttoning up that study. And so some of the assumptions that we have in today's current environment maybe feel a little different. First is stable demand. So we assume that your demand, your volume, that you're billing your customers is relatively stable. We have assumed about 3% O&amp;M inflation, and in today's environment, that's a little low. At the time we did the study, it felt a little conservative, and 2.5% on the cost of projects. So this is inflation, annual inflation on projects. Again, reasonable at the time, it's probably a little low in today's environment. General obligation debt, we have some debt included in the funding plan for the sewer utility, had an interest rate of 3.5%. That is relatively good in today's market, but we don't know where rates will end up. So this next slide will show you in the bars, the types of capital. So collection system oriented versus treatment plant oriented. So the collection system is in the red, the treatment is in the blue. A lot of the treatment projects came, were identified as part of the facility plan, and the collection projects mainly deal with renewal and replacement of lines and conveyance. The capital funding source is the graph on the right, and so that will show you that the primary funding vehicle here is debt, and cash has contributed as well, about $7 million in cash on a $16 million CIP.
And I would like to say, on the collection system side of things, in 2017, we took a hard look at our collection system, the age of it, the material type, the condition of it, and we came up with a plan on what we would like to see rehabbed, and it's mainly the vitrified clay pipe. And so over the next 30 to 50 years, our goal was to completely reline all of that pipe. Over the last eight years, we've lined about four miles of it, which isn't anywhere close to what we need to line in order to meet that plan. So, you know, one of the things we looked at is developing a funding stream to begin funding some of these sewer rehabilitation projects.
How many miles do we have?
Of that vitrified clay pipe, I want to say it's about 150 miles, but...
Oh, so we have ways?
We have a bunch.
We have four miles done, so...
Right, right.
It's insane.
Yeah.
We do have, I think, about a million dollars a year dedicated...
We do.
...to renewal and replacement of the pipe.
Yeah, 176 miles gets to be rehabbed.
And we want to do that all in 10 years?
No, no, no. It was somewhere in 30- to 50-year segments. And we do inspect that pipe on a regular basis. Our goal is to inspect that pipe once every 10 years, and so we're lining those pipes that are more critical to line, not just lining blindly, I should say. So we are doing a condition assessment. But I believe we need to invest more money into that program than what we have been prior to this rate scheme.
It's also the kind of project that we'd recommend funding out of cash because the liability you're dealing with there really never goes away. You're going to be working through your 50-year cycle, hopefully, and then in year 51, you start the clock over again. So we use debt sometimes to help augment those plans when funding has been shorter than desired, but the hope would be, over the long term, that it becomes more of a cash-funded strategy.
Yeah, slightly advanced. There we go. So this graph represents your cash flow, and the bars represent the cash requirements in the future years that we have projected. So we projected through 2027 in the sewer rate study. The blue represents your operation and maintenance expense. So you can see most of your cost per year is dominated by the O&amp;M. The red represents existing debt, and you can see it diminishing over time as some of your outstanding debt issues are retired. But we are issuing additional debt, which is in the green bar. And so those bars about offset, you'll incur additional debt to execute particularly the treatment plant projects. And the purple represents cash funding. So as Brian was noting, we're trying to get the cash funding ramped up for your utility. That purple really represents a good amount of progress to that regard. The lines represent revenue. So the black solid line is revenue under existing rates. And you can see, as I mentioned, we had a stable demand forecast, and so that line from 2022, which is the last year, or the 21, I think, so last year you adopted your last rate increase, they're flat from that point. It was 22, sorry, I misspoke. But after 22, we're proposing 5% per year, which is the dotted line, and you can see over time that revenue stream grows to match and align with the bars. So in the years that the bars are a little higher, we'll be drawing on reserves, and by the end of the program, we expect it to be cash-sufficient. I don't go into a lot of detail on cost-to-service. You have the reports, there's a lot of information there, but we use that information to inform how we think about proposed rates. So with the 5% proposed rate increase, one strategy would just be to increase all of your rate elements at 5% and call it good. From a cost-to-service standpoint, what we were seeing is your residential class really was driving less of the cost, and your larger users, commercial and industrial, was driving more. And so we have proposed a change in the minimum charge, which is one of the more influential pieces of the residential bill. At 3% per year, the volumetric fee is increasing at 6%, and that combined will achieve the overall system increase of 5% for each proposed year. And the rates below the minimum in volume charge reflect that. On your surcharge rates, so these are high extra-strength rates for users that have high volume and high strength. The suspended solids rate, the TSS, total suspended solids, that rate was very close to cost-to-service. We actually have it coming down ever so slightly over the study period for the proposed rates. The surcharge rate for BOD is increasing, I think, at about 6%, so similar to volume.
Why do we have that one coming down?
Because the costs that are being incurred suggest that the rates, which were increased in the last study, don't need to go up any higher. So we could have held that constant. We could have left it at the 33, 34 cent range, but in order to not over-recover total revenue, we nudged it down just slightly.
I just didn't know if we had any less burden on the suspended solids.
Less cost. So when we look at the revenue stream produced by that versus the cost, that's what we were trying to address. It's not materially out of alignment, but that's why we nudged it down.
When you benchmarked Hutchinson and those other communities, and we came out relatively low in comparison, did you break that out between residential and commercial?
We didn't.
Okay.
We looked primarily at residential for benchmarking. Commercial has some value in benchmarking. Industrial is really volatile in the way that communities recover those costs. But we did look in the study at what the proposed rates would do to commercial and industrial bills.
Yeah, that's what...
Yeah, so we didn't, we don't compare regionally, but we know that the rates that we're proposing will push commercial and industrial bills up about 6%.
That you don't know if that's going to make us more or less competitive? I mean, it's not like that's the determining factor in where business locates, but every little bit stacks along if that makes sense.
Right. We didn't look at that as broadly, but we know that the rate increases that we're proposing are very consistent with, you know, national levels, too. So I don't think we're likely to disrupt a competitive position, if you will, with So this chart is, again, that regional comparison residential monthly bill. We've added a second green bar for 2023. That's just the first year of the proposed rate, and you'll see from a competitive standpoint, minimal change. And that's assuming that none of your neighbors increase rates at the same time, which we expect is not likely. We expect there'll be some increases regionally as well. Any questions before we get into water? So water, we've really looked at in earnest in the middle of COVID and then coming out of it. And so some of the perspective is a little different on assumptions, and some of it was an attempt to be even more conservative. So we did assume, and you'll see it in the revenue graph when we show the revenues compared to cash expenses, a decline in use per account to pull the revenue stream down. And that really was an acknowledgement of, we weren't sure what COVID was doing at the time and didn't want to over-rely on the revenue stream or count on something that we don't, we don't know what the new normal is. I think for a lot of communities, that has settled down, but that was one of the concerns that we had. O&amp;M, consistent with the sewer study at 3%. We went a little higher on the capital cost inflation. Geo-debt in 2021, interest rates on debt actually came down, and so we were a little more optimistic there, 3% versus 3.5%. And there is a small amount of Kansas SRF loan in this plan, too, and it's at 1.5%. So similar format to how we looked at sewer, and the first thing we'll look at is the capital plan because that drives a lot of your cost. The type and the amount of capital by year is in the bar to the left, the bar chart to the left. Blue represents production, so this is treatment plant-related work primarily. Distribution, again, is renewal and replacement of lines primarily, and an increase. You can see that, similar to sewer, we're trying to increase the renewal and replacement on the distribution capital water lines. There's also a meter replacement cost that folds through here as well. We're debt-funding a little less of the program and cash-funding more on the water side. And so you can see that in the pie chart, and it's about 60/40, I think, cash versus debt in this plan. And again, just to talk a little bit about a plan for our water line replacement program. In 2016, we used a program that was developed by the American Waterworks Association, AWWA, to assess the city's water system. We've got 313 miles of water line within Hutchinson, and through that assessment, determined that we really needed to begin replacing about three miles of water line per year. And the primary focus is that pre-1950s, 1950s and earlier water line, is the water line that was getting close to or beyond its useful life. In the last eight years, we have replaced seven miles of water line, so we're not meeting our target. So again, one of the goals that I had and how we helped build this rate was to slowly begin to try to accomplish that, three miles per year. And we're not doing it in the first year because, again, we wanted to be fiscally responsible and not have this big rate shock. So by, I think it is 2029, we eventually build the rates enough to begin replacing three miles of water line a year.
When I came out for that tour, we talked about some differences in the next year or two in regards to requirements for contamination in the lines, lead, something like that. Is that something we're taking into account, or am I remembering that wrong?
No, you are correct. There are some new rules and regulations around lead and, the new lead and copper rule, and that is definitely going to have an impact and unsure what that financial impact's going to be just yet. But there is, the first thing that we're in the process of doing is doing a complete inventory of the service lines to determine where, if there are lead lines in the system where they're at, if there's galvanized lines in the system that have a lead gooseneck, where those are located.
I'm going to guess the financial impact is not going to be a decrease.
Right. I would agree. I would agree with that. There is going to be requirements to replace all lead services, not only on the public side, but on the private side as well.
So individual homeowners may have requirement, or property owners may have requirement as well.
It is, and the way it's worded is, it's the utility's responsibility to ensure that it happens, but we're not required to pay for it. So I'm not exactly sure how that's supposed to work, just yet.
Which shouldn't be unlined.
Right.
Gotcha.
It does, or has there been rumors that there's going to be some federal funds passed down to help with those, but I'm unsure of the program.
Yeah, and I know KDHE is, has developed a program to, 100% reimbursable, to help with the inventory piece first. That's the most critical piece. Everybody's got to get that inventory done so we know how big of an issue it is, and then from there, we'll move forward.
There was a pretty good allotment from the bipartisan infrastructure bill to help fund lead and copper. And my understanding, I think some of that is still to be determined, my understanding is that a lot of the grant funding associated with that is probably going to come through the state loan programs in the form of principal forgiveness, so KDHE loans.
Exactly. Yep.
So similar to the sewer utility, we're looking at the cash requirements for the water utility over time in the bars. And so we've got your O&amp;M in blue. Similar to the sewer utility, the water utility is reducing debt over time on the existing debt. So by 2028, the last payments are made for the currently outstanding. We are incurring some additional debt to help fund capital, in particular, capital lines until we get toward the end of the plan when your cash funding is sufficient. And you can see the growth in the purple parts of that bar. Again, that's largely capital transfers to help fund your program. The black line is revenue and existing rates. You'll see a slight negative bias to that line. It's a little more conservative outlook than we did on sewer, and the rate increases that are proposed for 2023 are 5.5%. So again, pretty consistent with what we see nationally in terms of annual rate adjustment. Similar to sewer, we use cost-to-service to help inform the rate pricing. And so similar to sewer, we see that your residential class drives a little less of the cost responsibility, with a little more falling on the higher use classes. And so that's reflected in the way that we've proposed the pricing. The minimum charges, which vary by meter size, are going up at a proposed 2% per year, and the volumetric fees are increasing at about 7%. Similar to sewer, we look at the competitiveness of your residential bill. We did not do the regional evaluation of commercial and industrial, but again, your rate increase and the amount of change that we have here is not materially different than what we see happening nationally. So I don't think, from a competitive standpoint, you're going to do any additional harm. The other thing that we noted was the city route, which is a heavily subsidized rate that is for some city services, an internal charge, was under recovering cost, and so we're increasing that gradually over time. You can see it is...
And the rate increases that are proposed for 2023 are at 5.5%. So again, pretty consistent with what we see nationally in terms of annual rate adjustment. Similar to sewer, we use cost of service to help inform the, the rate pricing. And so similar to sewer, we see that your residential class drives a little less of the cost responsibility with a little more falling on the higher use classes. And so that's reflected in the way that we've proposed the pricing. The minimum charges, which vary by meter size, are going up at a proposed 2% per year. And the volumetric fees are increasing at about 7%. Similar to, to sewer, we, we look at the competitiveness of your residential bill. We did not do the regional evaluation of, of commercial and industrial. But again, your, your rate increase and the amount of change that we have here is not materially different than what we see happening nationally. So I, I don't think from a competitive standpoint, you're going to do any additional harm. The other thing that we noted was the, the city route, which is a heavily subsidized rate that is for some city services, an internal charge, was under recovering cost. And so we're increasing that gradually over time. You can see it is currently at six to six cents, I think, per cubic foot, 100 cubic foot. And we're increasing it a penny per year, which is a pretty mild increase. But on percentage terms, it, it's noticeable. But, but if we do see long-term, we would encourage, and keeping an eye on that one is I, I think there's some room to push that up. Back to the residential comparison. And you can see with the second green bar, the 2023 proposed, no change in, in competitive position. And that assumes that none of your, your peer utilities have increased rates in 2023 as well. So remain below average and among the lower of, of your neighbors. So three more slides. This one is simply just a recap. We know revenue under existing rates for both the water and sewer utility is not sufficient to meet future needs. You've got a lot of capital needs on the books. And we've designed plans to fund those needs that are very much in line with what we see happening nationally, which is not always the case. The proposed increases will achieve the principles that we set out to meet. We're maintaining reserves. We're providing debt service coverage at 1.5x. Again, that's just a, a measure of, of health. It's not a covenant requirement that you have. But we are funding the critical infrastructure through a mix of, of cash and debt. It's not overly reliant on debt. And all along the way, your residential bills, we expect to remain competitive. We treat these studies, and I think that's the, the practice in your community and with your, your finance and public works teams, has been this way, too. These studies are guides, right? So they give you an idea of where you're headed. They should be recalibrated and, and especially in environments right now where we've got inflation running very high. I'm sure there will be some juggling to make the plans work as they've currently been designed because I expect your costs, you're, you're going to see some cost pressure. And I know some of that's manifesting already. And so that brings me to some thoughts around implementation. And in the last rate study, I believe you implemented five, five years?
Five years, yeah.
And, and there's some good things with that. That gives you some certainty in your pricing. It, it provides an opportunity to talk about it and then implement the plan. We find that works pretty well. But we're dealing with uncertainty at the moment in some of our cost assumptions. It's highest I've ever seen in my career. And that's both from an operating and a capital standpoint. And so I think it begs the question, do you do a single year and evaluate? Or do you do a five-year plan and see how it goes? And that's really where we would recommend that you go, is, is looking at the five-year plan. And we think there's a few advantages with that. We think with the current plan, we expect that you're going to remain competitive. The risk, I think, in evaluating it year to year is that there could be years where you're tempted maybe not to do anything. And, and in those cases, you're going to set yourself up for a snowball where rate increases following that will be higher. I think you run rest, less risk if you implement the five-year plan and then have your team as best they can manage to within that. It provides certainty around some of your capital projects and, and how they'll be funded, which with advanced visibility to that, I think helps those projects get implemented quicker and more reliably. The concern I have is just simply inflation and, and cost of debt. But I think it's more of an inflationary concern than, than debt pricing. So I, I think you're in a position where you'll need to monitor it and you'll need to manage it. And I know your team does that as part of their annual process. With the exception, I think that the, the relief valve would be if their conditions warrant, if you just can't simply make it work to come back to you and have a conversation about what's happening and why the rate increases might need to be adjusted. So that would be in the event of a significant or drastic change that knocked the plan out of balance. So that's, that's really the end of the material I had prepared for you today. Any, any questions I can help with?
How would it, how would it affect if you found, if we find that our assumptions for inflation on O and M capital cost is higher than 3%, would we be able to make that up by going to a 1.25 multiplier on our debt service coverage instead of 1.5? Is that a play back and forth?
It could be. So, so you could use more reserves. You could use more debt. And those are two ways to kind of manage to higher costs. You could choose to defer some capital in the event that, you know, that was maybe a, a strategy of last resort. But, but those are some of the adjustments that could be considered.
I mean, the, the 3% inflation over a wider period, I'm somewhat comfortable with that. But in regards to 2022, 2023, I mean, setting, setting a plan in motion for five years, not knowing how this first year is going to play out, I have some concern on that. I guess it would make you feel a little better knowing if we could back off to 1.5 if we needed to.
Good. That's not a covenant.
If it gives us some, if it gives them some wiggle room to adjustment.
Yeah, so if, if what you're doing, I think what you're really getting at is it would, would require a greater use of reserves. So the, the, the coverage is really just an annual cash flow health meter. And we've designed those rate increases to, to hit that level. If O and M grows more than we've projected, that coverage amount's going to come down. So it's, it's not allowing it to be different. Really, it's just a reflection of future conditions. It doesn't generate any additional cash.
Then it wouldn't even be significant.
I don't think so. I, I think, I think that's one of the things, we, we reflect it as a measure of just good prudent practice. But you're not under any obligation with, with geo bonds, you know, coverage really isn't a requirement. So all it will mean if you get less coverage than we projected is we're generating less cash. And, and that might, that might be one of the conversations that need to happen, that we're not able to cash fund as much as we hope because we're crowding it out with, with operating costs.
And the 3% on capital cost inflation is taken into account, the, the 5% on construction cost, 5% on, and how that averages out?
Yeah, so we, we look at a couple of project inflation indicators. One's engineering news record as a construction cost index. And long-term, it's 3% a year. Some years higher, some years lower. And so for planning studies like this, it's usually a pretty reliable benchmark. We also use Handy Whitman, which does very specialized inflation indicators for water infrastructure. It's also going to tell you long-term about 3%. So, so the, the concern really is probably just the next two years. I think, I think at that point, hopefully, yeah, we settle down to something that looks a little more normal. But, but navigating the next two years, I think will be the biggest challenge.
So did we get, I'm going to bounce back to what David was talking about earlier. So did we get any projected cost of bill increases? Would it be 7% on the water for the, the usage? How that's going to affect some of our commercial and industrial in our area? That seems like a lot.
So if you go, I think on page 11 of the water study and page 31 of the sewer study, I think that does do a pretty good job of showing those proposed rates based off of different. So do you remember the, the two studies that were sent out? The water and sewer studies? They were each of, you know?
Thirty-five pages.
About thirty-five pages each. So I'm, I think for communication purposes to the public, and I know we have Rebecca here, it would be prudent to spend a bit more time helping to, helping the public understand like, what is 5%? You know, on an average bill. And maybe that's not something we necessarily have to sit and calculate right now. But we do have that, either that information that the general public doesn't have right now.
So for a resident, on your water utility in 2023, it's about a dollar a month? I'm sorry, that's sewer. Sewer utility is about a dollar a month in 2023. And your water utility is about $1.34. So just a little over $2 a month on, on those bills. And on an effective percentage basis, it's around about 5%.
And for the residential?
That's for residential.
What about the commercial?
In, in the same tables, you'll, you'll see some information. We've got five different commercial profiles that vary based on different volumes and levels of use. And, and those range from anywhere for a very small commercial user, you know, $4 on the water bill, up to 1,400. But that's for a very, very large customer whose bill is $22,000 a month. So it, it really, that's where the percentages, I think, are a little more relatable because that's, that's the context with some of these commercial bills. The demand is so high, the bills are large, and the, the dollar change will feel substantial. But the percentage will tell you it's about 7%.
So if a business is paying $30, then you're going to pay a few dollars more, don't you?
Yeah, on a.
Well, not even that.
Our, our lowest resident, uh, non-residential profile is about $70 a month on water. And it's, it's a $4 change, a little less than $4. And on the sewer side, we've got the lowest, uh, commercial profile is about $45. And it's, it's a little over, it's about $2.50.
Thank you. I think going back to the question about one versus five, I completely respect your concerns about inflation. But I do feel confident we'll even out over time to come to that 3%. And I think that certainty is something always mentioned by, by businesses for sure and, and for planning purposes. But I think our residents deserve that same certainty, knowing what they're going into. And our staff, I mean, I can't imagine doing these type of project plannings like annually. You know, you really need to know what you're walking into. So I'm pretty comfortable with implementing the five-year plan. I thought you did a good job of summarizing the benefits of that. I don't know how the rest of the company feels about that or if you want to evaluate every year. That was your cue.
So, okay, so you have it where it's like $4 a year and then after five years, you have like a bill that'll be $60. And in five years, it'll be like $90. And then a bill that's like $9,000 will eventually be $15,000. And $20,000 will eventually be $33,000.
And this is a nuance, but the water plan actually has a six-year forecast. So yeah, that, the ending point is actually the sixth year that you're looking at. But yeah, you'll, you'll see the compound effect of, of the rate increases will be noticeable. But it is relative to a national average of 5% really consistent with what we see. It's not unreasonable from that standpoint. And, and when we look at the competitiveness of the residential rates, my presumption would be that, that your, your non-residential are, are also reasonably positioned. I don't think you're going to make it any worse with the plan that's proposed because I do expect your neighbors to be increasing rates. It's, it's something comparable over time.
Brian, can you provide some historical information about how we got to a point where our rates are so much lower comparatively? Did we, I know we just, we had the five-year plan, but prior to that, didn't we have kind of a time span where we didn't do increases?
We did. We had a six-year period from 2011 to 2017 where we had no rate increases.
So that's kind of where we got pretty far behind in keeping up with some of these capital projects.
We did. And I think there's even a graph in that study that shows our rates over time and compares it to kind of that national average rate increase. And you can see that six years really did put us behind. It's in the executive summary. I don't have it in the slide, unfortunately. I wish I did now.
But I, I remember this conversation when we talked in 2017 about how far behind we were.
Yeah.
But I couldn't remember how long it had been.
It's figure 1-2. So in the water study, it's page 1-3, it's pretty close to the front. And we've got a similar graph on the sewer. It's right there.
Yeah.
So, so that green line represents the effective change in Hutchinson. The blue is that 5% per year national average and the red is consumer price index.
I think, yeah. So I guess that's what I'm thinking in my mind per se is, I understand why you broke it up to the lower percent to residential and the higher percent to commercial, the average up to 5%. But there's a bigger difference. And is that difference going to make us less compatible? Because the 7% with the commercial, I'm going to pay more of that. I mean, if you spread it out, the residential is smaller, kind of collecting a bunch of dollars to save your commercial people so you can kind of be a little bit more competitive.
Yeah.
You get what I'm saying there?
From a, from a cost of service standpoint, so when we look at what we think the cost to serve the classes are versus the revenue that's currently generated, we, we saw more pressure on the, the large volume classes. So, so commercial and industrial, it's a, it's a justifiable position to, to, to act. But you're right, it's, it's a little like squeezing a balloon. So, so if you, if you choose to take less of the rate increase on the volumetric component and more on the fixed fee or the, the minimum charge, we still need to solve for that 5%. And, and so your residential bills will feel more pressure. And, and then you may see some change in the way that you are ranked competitively that way.
But the residential would only be like, what, $3 more?
We have to, we have to run it to, to look at the magnitude of impact. I wouldn't want to speculate on that. But let, let me see.
I can insert a little bit on the effect of the industry on the wastewater plant.
I just would like comparables, like if we were just to do the, instead of splitting it at 60, 70, 80, 90, what would we just did flat 5% for?
One thing I, I do like about having the higher percentage on the volume-based bill is that you are kind of disincenting overuse, right? Like you don't want to, you don't want to disincent saving water. You know what I mean? By, like, like if you have it attached to the volume of water you use. Although I recognize that some industries are going to have a high volume of use regardless. But they have the ability to ratchet up and down based on their usage, right? I mean, in theory.
Yes. I was going to try and see if I could test the sensitivity while we're here. It's probably something I'm better off doing back at the office. But I can tell you, if I pick 210. So for, I'm looking at the water study. So this is just for, for sake of example. We have a 60, 100 cubic foot commercial customer, 2-inch meter. They've got a bill of about $210 right now in 2022. If I were to run that rate out at 5% a year rather than at 7% in 2027, so we'd go up the five years, 23, 24, 5, 6, 7, that $288 bill falls to 268. So that gives you an idea of what that commercial sensitivity is, of the difference of that 2%.
Will you run that with one mark below that?
Yeah. I think I did that right. Let me check. Let me check. I show 11,000, uh, rising from 93.41 to about 11.921 in 2027 versus the 13.167. Then I think the context you need is what's happening on residential. So if we're at 27.25 today. It's going to be, I did that incorrectly.
So instead of the 34.79, it's going to be?
Oh, it's already running at 5%. So a little less than that, that you, which, where you would see a change, you're, you're a very small customer, which is, which is really where the, the benefit is running.
Yeah.
With that, let me run it there. That's where you would see it. So that's taking a bill that's currently about $18 a month. And it, it goes up to about $23. So it'd be about 10% higher than, eh, not quite. Be 23 versus, it's about a dollar more. So 5% higher, keep them literally.
I'm just, you have somebody who's paying $25 instead of $22, but you have a commercial building that's saving two grand a month. You know, that's why I'm like, I kind of like to look at a flat rate increase versus, versus, like, just, just because, you know, I like, I want to stay a little bit competitive on the commercial, for jobs and for channels. I know that Hutchinson has a lot of water and we could utilize that when we're talking about trying to bring in manufacturing and stuff. Like, one of the things that we have is we have high water tables, we've got our resource. So if we marketed that to try to get something in that we use water, we want to keep our commercial rate competitively low. That, that's all I'm trying to do.
I think it'd be helpful if we had this charge for commercial. Is that what you're trying to say? That we want?
We have this that we've been, we have been bantering about.
Yeah. Okay, well, I've got that page that I, I'll wear my glasses.
Apologize for that.
Really like this.
Yeah. I appreciate that.
I guess my question is comparatively, how, how this plan commercially will look similar to this? Are we under?
I, I can't speak to that directly.
It's such a ball of mixed bag before we say, you said, and you get what it is.
Yeah. And it really depends on the nature of the business and what their water use looks like. So, so.
Almost have to do it by industry.
Yeah. And it, you, you almost, you have to run multiple, if, if you really want to get a good comfort level with it, you really have to run multiple profiles and it's, it's a fairly labor-intensive thing to do.
One thing that City of Hutchinson does have, and I'm not sure other communities do, but I know Hutchinson does, the more water you use, the lower your volumetric rate is. So we've got three tiers and I can't remember exactly what the, Angela, maybe?
It's like zero to 500 and then 500.
It's black clouds right here.
Okay.
I guess I've got the rates right here, don't I?
Right here. This what you're getting at?
Well, no, we've got it. Yes, there it is. Yeah, the volume charge. So the volume charge drops. So the big, the more water you use, the less you're paying. So if you're using over 5,000 100 cubic feet a month, you're going to pay a 238 versus paying 292 for the first 500, 100 cubic feet.
Generally, that's pretty rare. Usually the more you use, the higher the charge is. Because they're trying to incentivize you to conserve water, especially in western communities.
Right.
I guess we'll pull up some of these cities and see if they have their water bill articulation listed as, as far as volume charge.
There's, there's a fixed fee element to that too. And if you're talking about small commercial in particular, they're, they're pretty influenced by the, the fixed charge as well because they can be expensive. It's really a matter of policy and, and some communities, if they try and, and get a little more revenue certainty and a little higher, through a higher fixed fee, that's, that's one way to do it. So do you, you really have to look at all of it to get, to get some comfort with it?
What business do we have that uses a lot of water?
Hutchinson Hospital uses a lot of water. They're one of our bigger customers.
Jackson Ice Cream.
Yeah, they might be the biggest.
Yeah, they're the largest, that uses municipal water, Sunoco. They pump their own water, but their water goes to the wastewater plant. So they're probably our largest portion going to the wastewater plant from an industrial customer.
I see.
Tyson's a large customer, at least for the wastewater.
Yeah, South Main. Those are big three.
Well, in order to give staff some direction, you're really looking for go, no-go revisions? What are you looking for, Brian?
Yes. I am looking for some guidance on what rates might, if, if the council is okay with the rates as proposed, if, if they would like to see those rates modified. It does have a big implication on the capital projects that we have proposed for '23 and beyond. So if there's no appetite for rate increases, that impacts our capital plan. If there is an appetite for what we've proposed, then we can look at moving forward with those capital projects that we've proposed in the five-year plan.
And that, does that include the ones we talked about last week?
Yes.
That included the rate increases?
Yes. All those projects include the rate increases, yes.
So when does the five-year plan start?
It would, the first year is 2023.
Okay.
For those projects that we discussed last, last week. And really, in, in my opinion, one of the most critical i- is our collection system, rehab projects and our water main replacement projects. I, I believe we are behind schedule on keeping those, that infrastructure up to date.
So there's a lot of debate about what falls under the purview of a local government, but I've never heard anybody debate that, you know, taking really good care of our basic water and sewer infrastructure doesn't lie within those responsibilities. And I think that we shirked that duty for a long time and we have a responsibility to get back on track. When we have water mains breaking at 2:00 AM that are 100 years old, calling our staff out in the winter to fix them, it, it seems like that can be prevented by a basic level of maintenance that we are not able to financially, we're not financially equipped to do right now. But I'm certainly open to, to conversation about some different level of increase. Do you think we need to, we need to have something put into place that enables us to shore up what we have and complete some of these projects that were set, what, $17 million in arrears on sewer projects?
That was the number that came out of the facility planning study that we completed in 2018 for those water field.
Let me get this straight. Our five-year plan starts in '23. So we're going to have a bill to increase every year up to five years. Am I right?
Kind of like we do with trash collection.
Right. So, well, if we don't like the way it's going and people are screaming at us and throwing apples at us for increasing, we can always come back and stop it and do something about it in the five-year, right?
I mean, I, I think so. We budget on a year-by-year basis because of cash accounting anyway, right? I mean, Angela's the expert on that. I mean, you would just amend the resolution.
Yeah. I think that's right. I think what you're doing is just setting out a plan.
Right.
And, and, and like with any plan, you go back and take a look at that from year to year and, but at least it gives the staff opportunity to match a capital improvement plan with, with that. And then if there's need to be, there needs to be adjustments, so certainly it can be done along the way. But I think it does make a lot of sense to try to have a plan so that people, the staff knows and I think the public knows kind of the direction you're headed and it gives them an opportunity to, like I say, put out a plan as to where they're going to, to go and address different issues because there is a lot of infrastructure out there that needs attention.
I mean, my only thing is I don't like the 7% volume increase. Year-over-year.
You don't like the 7% what?
I don't like the 7% volume increase.
I see.
Thoughts?
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm pulling that over too. So are you thinking that you share the burden more on the residential and take some off the volume charge?
Yeah, off the minimum charge.
Or add, add some to the minimum?
Just spread, like, when you're collecting the money, spreading it out, everybody's kind of contributing versus the players contributing just to keep a little bit of competitiveness. I just really don't like the 7% year-over-year.
I'd rather collect less money than put a larger burden on residential who, I mean, our residents are already experiencing enormous inflationary pressures on gasoline and groceries and.
I mean, I get that, but it's like only like a dollar or two dollars.
But those are the phone calls we get every January are from the people on social security. We don't have Tysons or Jacksons calling us. It's the people on social security.
Yeah. We need to be really mindful of, of that. And again, I, I respect your concerns on the commercial side and I have those similar concerns. I do want to.
I just don't like 7%.
But I would say like, maybe we select a different level of service than, like, we would have to completely rethink our capital projects, but I would just rather take in less overall and put a bigger burden on residents to offset the commercial costs.
So let me ask this. Do we all have an understanding or some, is there any, any heartache over a rate increase?
No, I mean, I think we have, we have to start.
That's necessary.
Yeah, we have to start addressing those problems.
It's the mix, that's the issue.
I would like to see a, like a three to five, 3% on minimum, 5% on volume.
3% on what?
3% on minimum, 5% on volume. And maybe reevaluating how many miles I guess we can do here.
I think on water, on sewer, we had a three and a six that got you to five.
Yeah, I'm talking about water.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm content, I could settle with the three and the six.
It's the two and the seven.
It's the two and the seven. I think it should be, I, I would like a three to five. I know that's silly, but 7% year-over-year compounding.
The, the same, well, we had a slightly higher rate increase on water and water cost of service actually, make sure I'm referring to the right.
It was really just to get us to the goals of your.
It was to get us to the goals, but, but in, and the, the water cost of service suggested a much higher rate increase for commercial and industrial. So the 7% was actually not really fully adhering to what the cost information was telling us. And it, it was an attempt to try and, and achieve a level of balance, but it wasn't exactly identical to what we did in sewer. Sewer was a little less volatile among the classes.
Do we have any users that don't use sewer but do use water? Cause I know we have some users that really don't use much water but don't, that do use sewer, like you talk about snow, but I mean, they don't really use our water. They, they pump their own, they definitely use our wastewater.
Yeah.
Is that typically, if it was going to go one way or the other, that typically the way it's, it's played out?
Golf course.
Golf course, uses water?
Uses water, doesn't get us any, throw any on the other side.
There you go.
Or any, any irrigation.
Right.
Yeah. We have a lot of yard meters.
I guess the question we need to ask ourselves is will that 7% make us not competitive in the commercial market and be a deterrent for growth, economic growth? I wish that I knew where we were in comparison. I know that you mentioned overall compared to McPherson and these other ones, that, that was strictly residential, correct?
Correct.
We certainly don't want to, and I think, I think those are two issues. I think your issue about the water rate is one thing, but the fact that we have a lot of water is a completely separate issue that we need to be selling.
Yeah. That's, that's kind of like why I brought it up. It could be a selling point and then we have a high cost on it.
It's. And I guess the question is, do we really have a high cost on it?
We will 7% compound it, that's a good point.
We've been in conversations.
Do we now? No, we don't. Is it sustainable for infrastructure? Definitely not. We need some form of increase.
We've been in conversations with the chamber about possibly working with the City of South Hutch to extend water to a new industrial park, which would be a pretty extraordinary cost. I don't know where we're going to land on that. The council will have to weigh the opportunity there with large users, depending on how competitive we can be, if we have the volume to even service the particular projects that they have in queue.
I certainly could test a three and a five on water to see if it balances.
If you could, if, if that was possible, would you be able to then come back and show us where that gap is and how that would affect our goals of like three miles a year a year? Or is that too much?
Yeah. If 5% is the cap on the volumetric piece, then my guess is probably you need to do something more than three to make the service fee, the minimum charge generate enough revenue. Yeah.
What I propose would generate less.
Yeah.
Than what's on it right now.
Yeah. But if we kept it, if we kept it steady on the residential and just brought in lots of money on cur, on the volume side, I'm curious how that affects our long-term projects. Like, are we only able to do two miles a year of that, that by clay whining? Are we only, you know what I mean? Or I may be mixing those two up, but I just don't want to see our residential rates go up more than they, more than we have to. We have a lot of people on fixed income in this community, a higher than average and we can, age, some poverty.
I, I think the risk that you run, when we do financial planning like this, we try and be relatively balanced slightly to the conservative side, meaning we don't, we don't want to over-project revenue or under-project cost. We want to keep a mental ledger of assumptions that we think are prudent. And the concern that I have just overall right now is because of inflation, I think the likelihood is that we're running a higher risk that the plan's going to cost more to implement than what we're showing. So as, as we talk about maybe looking at a lower rate increase, I, the, the sensitivity we run now may end up playing differently depending on how long you run at elevated inflation and, and how severe the, the elevation is. We, we hear a lot of anecdotal comments about projects 20% or more, in some cases dramatically more. And so as we, if, if you, if you want to consider a lower revenue stream, it may go less, won't go maybe as far as we would have hoped anyway. That would be my concern.
Yeah, well, I'm, I think we all have concerns about the commercial increase. But I'm only one voice on the residential. I don't know if anybody else has concerns, but I don't wanna see them go.
Our, our neighbors to the north charge three dollars and fifty cents per thousand gallons for commercial use. And it doesn't, it's just, that's flat, three fifty per thousand gallons.
So no decline?
No, you don't get any volume efficiency. Your economy's a scale on that. And then there, to give you an idea, their eight-inch inside sag limit is one thousand four hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty cents for the base charge.
But they have the lowest electric rates in the state.
But if you look, if you look at the chart below, they're just underneath us.
Yeah.
If we're looking for comparables, they're really close to us on comparables for water rates. Based on the chart we have in residential water.
Oh, gotcha.
So I'm trying to look at some comparable for where would we be at with the water rates?
I mean, everything's a mix, right? There's a lot of things that go into-
Pay more for electricity, less water.
Yeah, yeah.
Trash pickup guy smiles that year, doesn't smile last year. I mean, it's, it's service.
I think their store water utility's slightly higher than ours. So, yeah, there's just a lot that can't be competitive on everything, but-
If, if we, if we're looking to be competitive on a commercial scale, we wanna make sure we're competitive with the cities we're competing against. And looking at just the graph here that we were given for comps, which Tom McPherson just barely underneath us on rates. If you're looking at that as a benchmark, you know, just pull up the water and let's see what that charging.
I just, I just don't wanna, I, I wanna cap it at five percent.
Well, and, and that's not to say we can't tweak it after you're, hey, we need to change it by a quarter of a percent or the way, the way that it's blowing and you kind of get a better idea.
I mean, because the government has a real good track record of one percent increase.
What I wouldn't wanna do, what I wouldn't wanna do is, is find out that we are, we're creating reserves. And then a year or so, we go, wow, we have all this money and we're, we're charging people too much. And we're trying to level load it over a five, six-year period.
Oh, that would never happen. There's always a project or something, I think.
It's happened on other utilities, right? Hey, we have all this, this extra money and then we look at it and say, we're charging, we're overcharging people. Really, it's level loading projects over the course of five, six years. We just haven't had a capital improvement project, but we know it's coming down the pipeline.
Yeah.
Or the water line, as the case may be, or the water.
And the unknowns of what funds may come down the hill to us on that.
So the only change is going from three, seven, three to five, is that right? That, that you want, right? You're gonna go to five to three, right?
Uh, three to five. Yeah, well, two, two percent increase to a three percent increase. And then instead of seven percent over year, over year, it'd be five.
Yeah.
Can we look at finance and see how close that gets if we go up from two to three on those? Do you think that'd get us any closer?
I do. I can tell you with, with the data that we have, what the net effect of those changes at the rate component level will be. And then we can compare that against what we forecasted and see how much capital it would affect.
So when do we need to make a decision? By, by August, by budget time?
Yes.
So if we, would you recommend running different models and then putting it on an agenda for discussion to accept one or the other? Or is, do we need to meet again to discuss this further? When we see new, I mean, those different model options, which do you?
Well, I wonder if it, we could, we have a session set up to look at the operating budgets. And I wonder if that would be a good time to, to do that. That way, give us a little bit of time before the, we finalize the budget. But gives you an opportunity to talk about that in relationship to some of the other departments and all that.
Sounds good. Are we doing that on the thirteenth for the general fund?
Yes, yeah, June thirteenth. Yes.
That, is that ample time, right, gentlemen?
I think so, yeah.
And so you're gonna look at the five and the six for commercial, how that affects in the three percent increase. Instead of, was it two and a half for residential?
What, what we'll do is we'll move the minimum charge, which is what residential is influenced most by, from two percent a year to three percent a year.
Okay.
And then we'll take the volumetric fees, which we're going up seven, and we'll test them at six and five.
Okay.
And, and that will provide a different system-wide increase. So I'll tell you what that is and we'll know what the implication will be for future capital funding.
I have a question. Do we charge sales tax on the water for commercial customers?
For commercial?
Good.
There was an effort in the legislature this year to exempt and that maybe picked up again next year.
It would give, yes, they would exempt the state portion. And then there was talk about allowing local to exempt if they wish.
Okay, well, what else do you need from us, Brian and Gary?
I think that's, uh, gives us where we need to go. And we'll get that additional information and get that back to you so that you can take a look at it before the thirteenth, when you get the other packet of information. And I think that will help, help us a lot to move the budget forward.
Well, I just certainly appreciate all the work you put into this, Dave, and you as well, Brian. I found the studies to be very thorough and, and exploring the problem and kind of pointing us in the direction we need to go to fix it. So really appreciate, appreciate the work and, and the additional work you're going to do to-
Yeah, thank you, David.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thanks. Anything else for the, pause?
Thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
We're just about forty-three minutes back.
Dave, could you test maybe a couple other cities?
Yeah.
Selina, Lawrence, I mean, I, I don't know.
Maybe which Tom?
Yeah, maybe a few.
Actually, it helps to know-